Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 2024 City Council Meeting. Tonight's meeting is being held in City Council Chambers and is being streamed live on City 12 TV, as well as the City Council's YouTube and Facebook pages. We also continue to post meeting information and materials on the city's website. The meeting will now come to order, and I ask Deputy Clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Gruber?
Here.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Present, ma'am.
Councilmember Lupien?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Monroe?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Smith is excused. Vice President Harris?
Here.
And President Melendez?
The LGBTQ+ young people are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide compared to their peers. The Trevor Project estimates that 41% of LGBTQ+ young people seriously consider attempting suicide in the past year, including roughly half of transgender and non-binary youth, and at least one attempts suicide every 45 seconds. All of these very high statistics only get higher in every category when we consider BIPOC youth. Therefore, during our moment of silence tonight, I'd like to ask everyone to think about all the victims of violence throughout our city, but additionally, during Rochester Pride, let us also consider members of our LGBTQ+ youth who are grappling with violence and suicide at higher rates than their peers. I would ask the council and the community to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Councilmember Monroe, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for
I would like to invite my colleagues to join me at the podium for tonight's recognitions. Lynda Fogel, if you're here tonight, can you please join us in the front of the dais?
So, all of the cheering was because Lynda's last day here as an employee for the City of Rochester was on June 26, 2024. She retired after 20 years of working in the Building Services Division of the Bureau of Building and Parks in the Department of Environmental Services. We want to recognize her for her hard work, dedication, and time she has given to the City of Rochester. We truly appreciate you and wanted to take a moment during our council meeting to acknowledge
The Stonewall uprising is considered by many to be the watershed moment that launched
you and let you know that you'll be missed in the halls here at City Hall.
the modern LGBTQ+ civil rights movement and pride.
So, we'll take a quick moment for a picture, actually, Lynda, with you.
Rochester has a long and proud history of activism related to the LGBTQ+ rights, and
Not gonna let you get away with that.
soon after Stonewall, the first LGBTQ+ picnic took place in Rochester on July 16, 1972. Keeping this more than 50-year tradition alive, Pride festivities in Rochester still occur in July, which is why we celebrated Rochester's Pride Month here today in Council's chambers. Today, on the Tales of Our Pride Parade, this past weekend, we are uplifting the organizations, businesses, individuals, and allies that comprise the vibrant LGBTQ+ community here in Rochester. On behalf of the citizens of Rochester, we recognize and thank you for your service to our LGBTQ+ neighbors. Rochester's residents, families, and allies continue to see our city as a safe place where all individuals can flourish by promoting an environment for advocacy, outreach, inclusion, and equity, regardless of gender identity, sexual orientation, race, religion, ethnicity, gender, or birthplace. In our city, we are proud to stand with you. No matter who you are, we are grateful for all the work you have done to stand with our vibrant LGBTQ+ community, whether as a member or an ally. Happy Pride! So, now I would... So, now I would like to invite all of the organizations here representing... That were invited here tonight to represent LGBTQ+ community and its allies, to join us up front. I know there's many of us, so we want to have you all join us up front here, please. And as folks make their way to the front, I'm going to invite Councilmember Martin to the podium to say a few words.
Thank you. So, before I begin... Should we wait for pictures? Let's have you all take... Oh, let's go. Okay, cool, cool. So, before I begin recognizing that our queer movement is intersectional and all our struggles are interconnected, I would just like us to have a moment of silence for Sonia Massey, a black woman in Illinois who was violently executed by police after she called for help. So, reflecting on Massey during Pride Month, I think it's always important to remember that the fight for queer liberation is one that is, in fact, intersectional, and that pride is rooted in rising up against the police, the state, and institutions that fail to protect and recognize our humanity. The first pride was a riot. Many of you bring the fire of our elders, Marcia and Sylvia, into your work. You care for our community relentlessly. Your care is fierce, is transformative. I've seen many of you on the front lines and being the first points of contact for many people in crisis, refusing to take no for an answer when systems fail you, and instead managing to find new creative means to keep us safe. From the bottom of my heart and on behalf of the City of Rochester, I thank you. I see you. I thank you for the sacrifices you've made. I thank you for your strength, and I thank you for your labor of love. This year, I've had many conversations with a lot of you standing here, and we've talked about what it means for our municipal governments to materially support the queer community and make real investments in the life of famine, care, and safety you all offer. We've discussed the contradictions of visibility and celebration for one month of the year and the deep feelings of unsafety and material lack of support for the remainder of the year. As a body, I truly believe that one of the few things we are unified in is our commitment to ensuring that our local queer community has all the tools they need, not only to survive, but to thrive. So, to that end, over the next few weeks, I'm making a commitment to you and on behalf of some of my colleagues I've connected with, that we will work to reach out to you, learn about what gaps exist, and ensure that we're committed to supporting you all, not just during Pride Month, but throughout the year. Thank you and happy pride!
So, I'm gonna ask my council colleagues if we can loop around for the picture. We'll go on the dais, just so we can be part of it. Finally, since 1985, people around the United States have celebrated Park and Recreation Month in July to promote building strong, vibrant, and resilient communities through the power of parks and recreation. The services that park and recreation professionals provide are vital to our communities, from protecting open spaces and natural resources to promoting community health and wellness and providing activities and resources for all people. Park and Recreation Month gives us an opportunity to recognize the amazing Parks and Recreation staff in the Department of Recreation and Human Services here at the City of Rochester and the Department of Environmental Services. We have created certificates for all of our city's recreation staff, and we'll be dropping them off to each of our art centers in the upcoming month to show our appreciation for their tireless work creating a space for our children to be safe, have fun, and learn. Thank you to the hundreds of city staff who keep our parks, art centers, and recreation facilities going every day for residents in the City of Rochester. Also, a big thank you to Commissioner Dr. Shirley Green and Commissioner Richard Perrin for their amazing leadership in maintaining the structure and function of the city's art centers and parks. Thank you all. I knew I'd catch you off guard there.
Resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting on June 18, 2024 be approved as published in the official sheets of the proceedings.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The following documents are hereby... Directed to be received and filed. The council submits disclosure of interest forms from Councilmember Gruber on introductory numbers 269 and 282, Vice President Harris and Councilmember Lupien on introductory number 290.
Thank you. These documents will be received and filed. It is time for the presentation in reference of petitions and any other communications. Are there any petitions? Hearing none, we will move on to the reports of standing committees and actions there on. Chairperson Patterson, the Neighborhood's Jobs and Housing Committee report, please.
To the council, the Neighborhood, Jobs, and Housing Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. Introductory number 268, authorizing a license agreement with St. Mark's and St. John's Episcopal Church for the use of city properties as community gardens. Introductory number 269, authorizing a lease agreement with Providence Holy Rosary Housing Development Fund Company, Inc., for a temporary location for the Rochester Public Library Maplewood Branch. Introductory number 270, authorizing a mandatory purchase option agreement for the redevelopment of 1 and 2 through 12 Clarence Park. Introductory number 271, authorizing an appropriation and professional services agreement for the 2025-29 Consolidated Plan Support Services. Introductory number 272, authorizing funding and agreements for lead hazard evaluation services and radon testing for housing rehabilitation and lead hazard control programs. Introductory number 273, authorizing an agreement for hearing officer services. This report is respectfully submitted by Councilmembers Mitch Gruber, Kimberly Smith, LaShay D. Harris... Sorry. Vice President LaShay D. Harris, President Miguel A. Melendez Jr., and myself, Michael A. Patterson.
Thank you, Chairperson Patterson. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 268, authorizing a license agreement with St. Mark's and St. John's Episcopal Church for the use of city properties as community gardens. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 269, authorizing a lease agreement with Providence Holy Rosary Housing Development Fund Company Incorporated for a temporary location of the Rochester Public Library Maplewood Branch. Councilmember Gruber has submitted disclosure as he is the City Council Liaison to the Rochester Public Library Board of Trustees, and he is required to just disclose affiliation only and may discuss and vote on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 270, authorizing a mandatory purchase option agreement for the redevelopment of 1 and 2-12 Clarence Park. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 272, authorizing funding and agreements for lead hazard evaluation services and radon testing for housing rehabilitation and lead hazard control programs. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 273, authorizing an agreement for hearing officer services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Vice President Harris, the People, Parks, and Public Works Committee report, please.
To the council, the People, Parks, and Public Works Committee recommends for adoption of the following entitled legislation. Introductory number 274, authorizing an appropriation and mandatory agreement for the Bull's Head Revitalization Project. Introductory number 275, appropriating the Knives Deck Climate Smart Communities Grant Funds for Park Shelter's Project. Introductory number 276, authorizing an agreement relating to a select structural demolition and restoration project at Main Street Commons. Introductory number 277, authorizing an agreement for the Home Electrification and Revitalization Opportunity Program. Introductory number 278, authorizing an agreement related to the Commercial Operator's Skills Training Program. Introductory number 279, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $2,425,000 bonds of said city to finance the acquisition of eight special service vehicles. Introductory number 280, authorizing an agreement and appropriation to fund a water meter replacement program. Introductory number 281, a resolution authorizing a grant agreement appropriation, implementation, and local match funding for a water meter replacement program to be funded in part by the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation through its green innovative grant program. Introductory number 282, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $142,000 bonds of said city to finance the Bosch and Lam library roof replacement. Introductory number 283, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of the $1,238,000 bonds of said city to finance the cost of Broad and Allen Firehouse Priority Facility Improvements. Introductory number 284, authorizing appropriations and agreements for the Maplewood Nature Center Project. Introductory number 285, appropriating American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Duran Eastman Beach Site Improvements Project. Introductory number 286, authorizing an agreement for the Stop Violence Against Women Act Grant Program. Introductory number 295, authorizing a consolidated fund grant applications and agreements. Introductory number 296, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $5,985,000 bonds of said city to finance the cost of Goodman Firehouse Priority Facility Improvements. Introductory number 297, authorizing an agreement related to the Goodman Firehouse Priority Facility Improvements. This report is respectfully submitted by Councilmember Willie Lightfoot... Willie J. Lightfoot, Councilmember Mary Lupien, Councilmember Michael Patterson, Council President Michael, Miguel A. Melendez Jr., and myself, LaShay D. Harris.
Thank you, Vice President Harris. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 274, authorizing appropriation and a mandatory agreement for the Bull's Head Revitalization Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 275, appropriating New York State DEC Climate Smart Communities Grant Funds for a park shelter's project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 276, authorizing an agreement relating to a select structural demolition and restoration project at Main Street Commons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 277, authorizing an agreement for the Home Electrification and Revitalization Opportunity Program. Introductory number 278, authorizing an agreement related to the Commercial Operator's Skills Training Program. Introductory number 279, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $2,425,000 bonds of said city to finance the cost of Goodman Firehouse Priority Facility Improvements. Introductory number 297, authorizing an agreement related to the Goodman Firehouse Priority Facility Improvements. This report is respectfully submitted by Councilmember Willie Lightfoot... Willie J. Lightfoot, Councilmember Mary Lupien, Councilmember Michael Patterson, Council President Michael, Miguel A. Melendez Jr., and myself, LaShay D. Harris. Thank you, Vice President Harris. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 274, authorizing appropriation and a mandatory agreement for the Bull's Head Revitalization Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 277, authorizing an agreement for the Home Electrification and Revitalization Opportunity Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 278, authorizing an agreement related to the Commercial Operator's Skills Training Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 279, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $2,425,000 bonds of said city to finance the acquisition of eight special service vehicles. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith is excused. Vice President Harris?
Yes.
And President Melendez?
Yes. Motion carries. Introductory number 280, authorizing an agreement and appropriation to fund a water meter replacement program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 281, a resolution authorizing a grant agreement appropriation, implementation, and local match for a funding a water meter replacement program to be funded in part by the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation through its green innovation grant program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 276, authorizing an agreement relating to a select structural demolition and restoration project at Main Street Commons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 277, authorizing an agreement for the Home Electrification and Revitalization Opportunity Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 278, authorizing an agreement related to the Commercial Operator's Skills Training Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 279, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $2,425,000 bonds of said city to finance the acquisition of eight special service vehicles. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith is excused. Vice President Harris?
Yes.
And President Melendez?
Yes. Motion carries. Introductory number 280, authorizing an agreement and appropriation to fund a water meter replacement program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 281, a resolution authorizing a grant agreement appropriation, implementation, and local match for funding a water meter replacement program to be funded in part by the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation through its green innovation grant program. All in favor?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 282, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York authorizing the issuance of $142,000 bonds of said city to finance the Bosch and Lam library roof replacement. Once again, Councilmember Gruber is disclosing that he's a member of the Library Board of Trustees, but he may discuss and vote on this item. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith is excused. Vice President Harris?
Yes.
President Melendez?
Yes. Motion carries. Introductory number 283, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York authorizing the issuance of $1,238,000 bonds of said city to finance the cost of the Broad and Allen Firehouse Priority Facilities Improvements. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith is excused. Vice President Harris?
Yes.
And President Melendez?
Yes. Motion carries. Introductory number 284, authorizing appropriations and agreements for the Maplewood Nature Center Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 285, appropriating American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Duran Eastman Beach Site Improvement Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 286, authorizing an agreement for the Stop Violence Against Women Act Grant Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 295, authorizing consolidated fund grant applications and agreements. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 296, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York authorizing the issuance of $5,985,000 bonds of said city to finance the cost of the Goodman Firehouse Priority Facility Improvements. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith is excused. Vice President Harris?
Yes.
And President Melendez?
Yes. Motion carries. Introductory number 297, authorizing an agreement relating to the Goodman Firehouse Priority Facility Improvements. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chairperson Gruber, the Budget, Finance and Governance Committee report, please.
To the council, the Budget, Finance and Governance Committee recommends for adoption of the following entitled legislation. Introductory number 287, authorizing a mandatory agreement for telephone town hall meeting services. Introductory number 288, appropriating 24-25 Annual Action Plan Funds and amending ordinance number 2024-143 relating to an agreement for financial empowerment center counseling services. Introductory number 293, authorizing an agreement relating to the sourcing of technology products and services. Introductory number 294, authorizing an agreement for employee recruitment and applicant tracking software and services. This report was respectfully submitted by Councilmembers Stanley Martin, Councilmember Bridgette Monroe, Council Vice President LaShay Harris, Council President Miguel Melendez and myself, Mitch Gruber.
Thank you, Chairperson Gruber. That report will be received, filed and published and will proceed with the vote. Introductory number 287, authorizing a mandatory agreement for telephone town hall meeting services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 288, appropriating 2024-25 Annual Action Plan Funds and amending ordinance number 2024-143 relating to an agreement for financial empowerment center counseling services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 293, authorizing an agreement relating to the sourcing of technology products and services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 294, authorizing an agreement for employee recruitment and applicant tracking software and services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chairperson Lightfoot, the Public Safety Committee report, please.
To the council, the Public Safety Committee recommends for adoption of the following entitled legislation. Introductory number 289, authorizing an agreement with the Protectors Incorporated Rochester, New York for their auxiliary services. Introductory number 290, authorizing a mandatory agreement, intermunicipal agreement with the Rochester City School District and amending the 2024-2025 budget related to the provisions of overtime police services at school facilities for the 2024-2025 school year as amended. Introductory number 291, authorizing an agreement related to the 2024-2025 Gun Involved Violence Elimination Grant. Introductory number 292, authorizing a mandatory agreement with the Monroe County for traffic signal preemption maintenance. Introductory number 298, a local law amending the city charter related to the flood damage prevention. Introductory number 299, deleting chapter 56 and revising section 12192 of the municipal code with regards to flood damage prevention. Respectfully submitted by Councilmember Mitch Gruber, Councilmember Mary Lupien, Councilmember Stanley Martin, Councilmember Bridgette Monroe, Councilmember Michael A. Patterson, Councilmember Ken Smith, Vice President LaShay Harris, President Miguel Melendez and myself, Willie J. Lightfoot.
Thank you, Chairperson Lightfoot. That report will be received, filed and published and will proceed with the vote. Introductory number 289, authorizing an agreement with Protectors Incorporated of Rochester, New York for auxiliary services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 290, authorizing a mandatory municipal, intermunicipal agreement with the Rochester City School District and amending the 2024-25 budget related to the provision of overtime police services at school facilities for the 2024-25 school year as amended in committee. Vice President Harris and Councilmember Lupien both have submitted disclosures as employees of the Rochester City School District and they are required to disclose only and may discuss and vote on the item. And I will turn it to Councilmember Lupien.
Yes, thank you. I have placed a proposed amendment on your desks, colleagues, and for the front row here, if you have had a chance to look at it. We all agree that our students and teachers deserve to feel safe at school. I was pleased to hear Director Shepherd's preference to pursue training for in-house staff on de-escalation, violence prevention and intervention rather than simply expanding police presence as a preemptive measure. However, we are in a time when our officers are overworked and in short supply and we need to use them as effectively and strategically as possible. While police presidents may act as a deterrent, it only does so while they are present. Overtime for officers is costly and provides a temporary solution. Once officers leave, underlying issues remain unaddressed. This is an expensive stopgap measure rather than a sustainable approach. Programs like Pathways to Peace and supporting this social-emotional development of our students is not just about managing their behavior, but it gives them skills that will follow our students beyond the schoolyard in their days at R C S D and will contribute to lifelong success. These are long-term investments in our community's health and safety. Our entire community will benefit from this restorative approach. I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Gruber, for highlighting during the committee meeting the Pathways to Peace program and his interest in its stronger implementation. I agree with him that we should collaborate with R C S D on expanding this program and do everything that we can to ensure that they receive all necessary resources. And we can take steps to do that tonight. As council, we can be an accountability partner and support R C S D's efforts by amending this legislation before us. It's not enough to just talk about what we want to do out loud. We need to put our intentions in writing. And so I move to amend section one of introductory 290 as follows. Appending to section one, adding the wording and requiring a detailed community safety plan produced in collaboration between the city and R C S D that includes violence prevention, suppression and intervention, which does not solely rely on R P D presence during arrival and dismissal times. This plan would need to be completed by January 31st, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
So the motion was made and there was a second, so we'll open it up for discussion. Any questions, comments, concerns or additional discussion? I can lead off. I understand the intention and appreciate the intention here. I think that the idea that we should have holistic approaches to safety on the whole and particularly around our school buildings is critically important in our community. My position though on this is that we should not be the ones amending this particular item. And I've had discussions with Board Education Commissioners. I had a discussion with Commissioner Santiago and the Vice President Beatrice Lebrun about this and encouraged them that if this is a path that they would like to take, I certainly would be in support and in collaboration, but it really should be initiated, in my opinion, by the Board of Education and the Commissioners over there. And I would play a collaborative role in trying to figure out, you know, what services we could provide. But the legislation that's before us really is about us approving whether or not we're going to accept money from R C S D for services that we would provide. So that would be why I would be voting no, but it's not no to the concept, it's no to amending this particular item. Councilmember Martin?
Councilmember Lupien, in making this amendment, my understanding is you connected with Commissioners and could you talk more about that?
Sure. The actual motion from the R C S D is also on our desk. And as you can see, three of the school Commissioners voted no, four of them voted yes. I've spoken to Beatrice Lebrun, Amy Malley and Isaiah Santiago who are supportive of this concept of expanding to a more holistic approach. Agree that it's not a sustainable measure and, you know, these are conversations that I had and maybe I may mischaracterize, but that's the impression that I got. And I also connected with Commissioner Simmons who similarly, you know, is open to this idea. I know Commissioner Santiago also spoke with the superintendent about the intention of mine to amend the legislation. And I had a nice conversation with Director Shepherd before this meeting where I informed him of the legislation.
Sounds good. Yeah, I appreciate you being thorough and doing the legwork to make sure that you are doing this in collaboration with the Board of Education. I will also say that this has come before us several times and we don't have any information about the impact, about what's going on, why we continue to need this service. So I do see this as a step towards having a plan, a plan that can be evaluated. So for me, I'm going to support it and I appreciate you doing the legwork and doing this collaboratively with the school board.
Councilmember Lightfoot followed by Councilmember Vice President Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I too just want to commend my colleague Lupien for doing the legwork on this. This makes sense. As Chair of Public Safety and someone in the public safety background, to have a community safety plan, there's not much, there's not much control we have with the Rochester City School District. However, we give them a blank $119 million check every year. Many of us have deep concerns about that. And oftentimes when we're able to impact in a positive way, especially in regards to safety, who or why would we be against a public safety plan? A comprehensive collaborative public safety plan that helps to ensure that our, that we have sustainable resource, especially since our government, the city government, has moved and shifted how we do business to more human service, business to more work that we do around restorative practices and et cetera. I believe it just makes sense for us, this to be a next step for us, for the city to lead the way, if you will. Being that oftentimes we don't have a lot of leverage with the Rochester City School District. But when it comes to safety and public safety and putting together a safety plan that would be sustainable, I think it's just wise and just makes sense. So I will be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, President Melendez. I just like to ask, I was wondering if it's possible I can commit my questions to Mr. Shepherd. I have a question, a couple few questions in regards to the C School District. Do you guys have a plan, a current plan for how you deal with any kind of incidents at the schools? And if so, could you explain what kind of plans and what kind of collaborations that you guys already have in place at the City School District?
Good evening. The Rochester City School District, we do have state mandated, State Education Department, safety plans that we submit every year. We also have a collaboration with the Rochester Police Department where we give them our building level emergency response plans. We do extensive training. We go into training for the last two months of August with the focus is not so much on dealing with kids, but on interacting and relationships and helping them interact with each other. For me, the main thing is this, public safety is prevention. So it's better to prevent something as opposed to respond to it after the fact. And so I know that the efforts by the R C S D to collaborate with the Rochester Police Department and have this contract go forward is mainly about maintaining public safety outside the school building as opposed to what goes on inside the building. And the instances that we've had that have let us to have this contract have been very violent events involving weapons, which to be honest with you, the people that work in the school district and the security teams are not prepared to address.
So I just got a follow-up question and thank you very much for that. So these plans that you guys had, you've had those in place for many years, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you've had numerous of folks around the table, not only just police, but you also have fire, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, so thank you very much. I'd like to also add my comments to this. I'm not against what you propose, Councilmember Lupien. I just believe that we are kind of out of our scope with this because this came to us on behalf of the school board, from, you know, the whole collective and they had a majority vote of five. If you had brought to us a letter from the school board with five people on the letter signing that you want this, that they want this, I would be supportive. For that, I'm voting no.
Councilmember Patterson?
So, thank you for that. And, you know, Councilmember, we kind of see what you're trying to do here, but the challenge is, quite frank, well, let me ask this question to Mr. Shepherd. In your, who else other than police and fire are you working with collaboratively on safety in yours, in the R C S D schools? Are you working with Pathways to Peace and other entities?
Yes, we do. I think probably for the last 10 years, we've had a contract with the City of Rochester relative to Pathways to Peace. That continues into this coming school year as well and covering our summer school programs.
Okay. And so when it comes to school safety, the Rochester City School District is the right and proper lead for implementing and pushing for school safety. Is that your position?
That is correct. And I just want to add too that I think just from what I'm hearing here tonight is that we can do a better job in terms of informing you of what our plans are and what we are doing as opposed to not telling you. But we have extensive things in place. And when we talk about having the police at our schools for arrivals and dismissals, it's really dealing with things that are not student related. It's related to things coming in from the neighborhoods that we do not have control over.
Okay. And so we have, so you have other contracts with us. So like Pathways to Peace, we have a contract with Pathways, you have a contract for Pathways to Peace services?
Yes, we do.
And so when you want services from us, board passes a resolution, sends it over, then the administration puts the document, and this is for the administrative document, then the administration puts together the document, submits it to council for approval. Is that the process?
That is the process, yes.
Okay. And so the, so for the administration here, the amendment as submitted and then amended earlier is based upon what the Rochester City School District requested. Is that correct? Okay. So I guess this next question is for the Law Department. Do we have the authority to mandate that the Rochester City School District do anything?
Not with regard to this issue. We're preempted by New York education law.
Okay. So the most we can do is give them what they asked for?
Yes.
And so what they have asked for is in the introductory as amended in committee? And so, what they have asked for is in the introductory, as amended in committee, that's what, that's all we can legally do, is that correct?
That is correct, Councilmember.
Thank you.
So I have, uh, Councilmember Lupien, Councilmember Martin, and I have another comment.
As for the legal question, we submitted this legislation to law and it was approved. Can you, uh, help me understand where the disconnect is?
My understanding is that the legislation that was approved was the original item, not the amendment.
No, that's not correct.
The amendment was sent to law initially, yeah, and we did get it back through Tom Wirth.
The amendment would have been reviewed for appropriate procedural content, I don't know that Tom Wirth would have opined on the legality of what you were looking to do.
I would also like to respond to Director Shepherd. Um, if someone is coming to the school to do an act of violence against a child who is inside of the school, I would argue that it is not, it is student-related, and the importance of having, I understand we've had Pathways to Peace, Peace in our schools, I work at a school that has had Pathways to Peace and is an incredibly vital service, it's not enough. The strong suit of Pathways to Peace is that they are involved in the beefs that come from outside as well as inside, and most of them start inside and bleed outside, so just having police that arrival and dismissal, right, that is a deterrent, but it doesn't solve the root issue, which stems from issues inside of the school and those in the community. Um, for those reasons, uh, that is the intent of putting in writing council's intention, which I hear, we all agree on, that we would like to see more being done with Pathways to Peace, more being done with social emotional learning, and that we are ready to support with what resources we can provide for those services to be expanded. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, it's, it's so deeply disappointing that, you know, like, Councilmember Lupien has gone through all the steps, like, talking to every person she can within the school board, going through the process, submitting to law, getting it approved by law, and at every point, it's just, like, what is the real reason that this is a no? This is common sense, right? Like, she's just saying, "We want to see a more detailed community safety plan." We have Mr. Shepherd saying, "We have more information and we can do a better job of sharing a more detailed community safety plan." We agree we want more details, we agree we want a holistic approach, so like, what, what is the core of the, of the issue? She went through the steps, she talked to the school board, school board members support this, she's talking to, uh, Shepherd, law approved, now they're saying they didn't approve. It's just really confusing to understand, like, the intentions behind, like, what's a yes and what's a no, um, when to me, it's like, we're saying we su- we support this in theory, but in writing, to materially get the results we want, there's every excuse to not support, and I'm just struggling to understand.
I'd like to respond, if that's okay?
I'll, I'll give you a response, and then I'll follow up after, and then we'll go to Councilmember Patterson after me.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Martin and Lupien, no disrespect to neither one of you, um, I just believe that this legislation, um, that the amendment that you submitted is something that should have been submitted really at school board, I think that, that resolution should be pushed at school board level, that's, that's all that we're saying. And honestly, this conversation, or the information that Shepherd has given us, it's probably information that we should be requesting from the school board on a regular basis anyway. I'm glad this is brought, brought up, because I think many of you don't know that there is, there is a, um, collaboration that happens at that level, and, and they meet on a regular, you know, on a regular to do all those type of things, including tabletop type things. I've only known this because I worked in EMS, and I was invited to that table when I worked in EMS at AMR and at Real Metro. So they, they, they do quite a bit of planning, and they update the plan every single year, and that includes, um, you know, the shelter in place and all of those other things. Unfortunately, that stuff doesn't filter down to us, so I just, you know, I respectfully, you know, tell you that, you know, I believe that this belongs at the school board, and that's something that we should request formally from our body to get those documents.
Yeah, now, I'll add a little bit to that. Um, I think for me, in, in not supporting the amendment, again, and I, I like what Councilmember Lightfoot said, actually, I think this is not a no to the concept, it's that I don't think amending this legislation is the right way to do it. Now, what I've talked to the Commissioners, um, at, at the Board of Education about is, you know, they should really initiate the process, and put forward a resolution on their end that gets at having a plan, having a plan that's initiated by them, because it's really their school buildings that we're talking about, and their campuses, and it's services that they're asking of us. Um, and I'm willing to be collaborative in part of that plan, but I don't think amending this legislation is the way to do it. Um, also, this is like us legislating another legislative body, us telling another legislative body what to do, even if they are in collaboration, they didn't vote on that. So, I think there's fundamental some issues with doing it this way, but I'm not opposed to the concept, and I appreciate the discussion we've had over putting the amendment forward. So, um, that, that would be my response to, to the, the question. I do want to give, uh, Councilmember Patterson an opportunity to jump back in. Good? Uh, Councilmember Martin?
I, I think the disconnect for me, and I do appreciate this conversation, um, is the fact that this amendment is in fact supported by the school board members, right?
They didn't vote on that.
But the amendment as proposed is something that has been reviewed by members of the school board, and they are aware of this, right? So, I think procedurally, maybe we just, we, we disagree, um, and I do appreciate your explanation, and, uh, Vice President Harris, I appreciate your comments. I am aware that there, uh, is a lot of collaboration and community safety planning, and this amendment is actually doing what you're saying, like, they should do, it's saying they should give us the community safety plan that exists. So, again, it's, it's like materially legislating on the thing we all agree on, uh, so, it, I appreciate the conversation, um, yeah.
Uh, Councilmember, uh, uh, Martin, I just wanted to clarify, well, I did have discussions with the, the, uh, school board Commissioners, but it's not the same as them stamping the approval on the particular wording of my amendment, but they are, um, supportive of the concept.
So, Councilmember, Councilmember Patterson, and I'm gonna move us to voting on the amendment after Councilmember Patterson.
So it's, it's nice that Councilmember Lupien spoke to school board members, and it's nice that they agree with her position, but the fact of the matter is, as a body, as a legislative body, we act on the legislation presented to us. Their responsibility as a legislative body in this instance was to request a service from us. In doing that, they pass their board resolution. That board resolution stated what they wanted. If they want something different, it's very easy for them to pass another board resolution and do that. Thank you, Councilmember Lupien, for explaining your resolution, because I really didn't understand what it was, just based upon what was in the document, but it sounds as though you'd like more resources from Pathways to Peace, and I'm in support of more resources from Pathways to Peace, and quite frankly, I believe that when we voted on their last request for resources from Pathways of Peace, we were literally like, "Hey, you need these workers at all of your middle schools, how come they're not there?" And it was kind of like, "Well, yeah, we don't think so." So, and even though we might disagree, our duty and our obligation is to respect their opinion. We have no power to compel them to do anything. They have to vote, they have to request, they send it to us, and then we approve their request or we don't, that's the process. The amendment doesn't fit the process. Makes sense, I'm in favor of it, but it doesn't fit the process. I don't know if they just come back and go, "Yeah, pound rocks, we ain't doing it, we have no way of enforcing it," and it may well blow up the entire contract. So, the thing to do today is to unfortunately vote against your amendment and go forward, and if folks want to go over there and have a conversation with them and encourage them to pass another one, please do, and send it over so we can vote yes. But today, the duty is to vote no.
I, I, I'm sorry, I just want to check this with law too. I understand that this amendment does not have the support to pass, but my understanding was that this was worded, it is about entering into an, an intermunicipal agreement, which would include the community safety plan.
Councilmember, I do appreciate where you're coming from with that, unfortunately, using it as a term in a contract doesn't change the fact that the city does not have the authority to require that of the school district.
Even as part of a contract?
Correct.
Is it possible to withdraw an amendment once it's been seconded, seeing that it doesn't have the support to go forward?
I believe so.
Okay, I'd like to withdraw the amendment.
One quick question from Councilmember Martin.
So, based on, on what you're saying, like, we can't ask the school board to provide a safety plan, a holistic safety plan, um, around violence prevention?
City council could certainly ask the school board for a copy of the plan that exists, but the language in this amendment has additional terms, it's, it's seeking a new plan.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
So just a procedural question now, um, with the amendment being withdrawn, do we have to second that, or is it final there?
I believe, once the amendment is withdrawn, it's withdrawn.
Thank you. Any further discussion, uh, before we vote on the introductory? Let me find where I am again, 290, as amended in committee. All right, Councilmember Martin, final word.
Just thank you, Councilmember Lupien, um, you're always, uh, trying new things and trying to, like, put our ideas into legislation, and I really appreciate how hard you worked on this, thank you.
All right, with that, we will vote on introductory number 290, authorizing an ammendatory municipal agreement with the Rochester City School District and amending the 2024-25 budget relating to the provision of overtime police services at school facilities for the 2024-25 school year as amended in committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
We'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
No.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith is excused, Vice President Harris?
Yes.
And President Melendez?
Yes, motion carries. Introductory number 291, authorizing an agreement related to the 2024-25 Gun Involved Violence Elimination Grant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 292, authorizing ammendatory agreement with Monroe County for traffic signal preemption maintenance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 298, a local law amending the city charter relating to flood damage prevention. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith is excused, Vice President Harris?
Yes.
President Melendez?
Yes, motion carries. Introductory number 299, deleting Chapter 56 and revising Section 120-192 of the municipal, the municipal code with regard to flood damage prevention. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will now read the Committee of the Hull report to the council. The Committee of the Hull recommends the following entitled legislation to be held in committee. Introductory number 300, resolution confirming the appointment of the Executive Director of the Police Accountability Board. This report was respectfully submitted by Councilmembers Mitch Gruber, Willie J. Lightfoot, Mary Lupien, Stanley Martin, Bridgette Monroe, Michael A. Patterson, Kim Smith, Vice President Harris, and myself, Miguel A. Melendez Jr. So that report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. So I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 300, a resolution confirming the appointment of the Executive Director for the Police Accountability Board from committee. Can I have a second?
Move, second.
It's been seconded, so let's vote on discharging introductory number 300 from committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. So any discussion on introductory number 300? I, I want to lead off on this. Um, I would like to first thank the search committee and the PAB, um, board for getting involved and, and being part of a process that ultimately landed a recommendation for Dr. Leslie Myers-Mall to be considered by the council, uh, for appointment, and today we received a memo that I'd like to, uh, read into the record before we, um, before I open up for further discussion. Um, so there was a memo that was provided on clarification of organizational structure and chain command, uh, from Dr. Leslie Myers-Mall, and it reads as follows. "I feel that it is important to clarify the Police Accountability Board's position within the city's organizational structure and our relationship to the city council. The city charter provides that the PAB will be an independent office and conduct independent and objective investigations of the Rochester Police Department. This is critical per the charter to ensure police accountability and transparency. That said, I want to clearly state that I understand and acknowledge that the PAB's independence over its investigations does not change the fact that it operates under the purview of city council. We are an integral part of the broader municipal governance framework entrusted with specific responsibilities that contribute to the overall mission and goals, which are themselves determined by city council. It is crucial to emphasize that our successful operations rely on the guidance provided by city council. I recognize and fully acknowledge the authority vested in city council, for example, to set strategic objectives, allocate resources, et cetera, to ensure accountability and effectiveness within our agency. Please consider this memo as a reaffirmation of our understanding of our role and responsibilities within city government structure, governance structure. I am dedicated to working closely with each of you to achieve our shared go- goals and to serve the best interests of our community." Uh, Dr. Myers-Mall, I first want to thank you for sharing this, um, I think it was important, given the last time we had a confirmation, um, all the confusion that there was at the time, and this really, I think, helped to, for me to clarify, um, particularly with some of my colleagues, um, who wanted to really hear from you following the confirmation hearing, and having a follow-up memo, uh, was, was very helpful in that regard. Um, I also just want to say that I've had the opportunity to, to have a brief, but fruitful conversation with you since the hearing as well, um, and I, I think that there's a lot of opportunity ahead for the, the work and for the Police Accountability Board, um, and frankly, I, 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 tonight, am going to be voting yes in support of your confirmation, and I look forward to the work ahead, so I'll open up for further discussion. So Councilmember Martin, followed by Councilmember Monroe.
Um, this is a question directed to law. Um, within the, uh, charter regarding the PAB, is there anywhere that says that council is required to set the, or expected to set the objectives, um, for the Police Accountability Board? Could you provide some clarity on that?
Uh, that kind of information would require privileged and confidential session with city council.
I think, um, this is an important question, I mean, at the core of our decision-making, the question of independence and the role of council has been brought up, so I do think it's important, like, if you need time to give us an answer, I think it might be important for us to clarify this.
That is not an answer that I can give you today, and I would reiterate, that is the kind of answer that would relate to potential and previous litigation and should be discussed in a privileged and confidential session.
So, you're not able, so even if we were to create a privileged and confidential executive session, obviously I can call it up to the president, you're still not able to give that, that answer? I, I think it's a...
That is correct. That is not an answer that I can give you today, but that is an answer that should be discussed, discussed in a PNC session.
So without that information, right, regarding... So, without that information, right, regarding, like, how the city law department interprets the role of council and the PAB, and how our potential future head of the PAB interprets it, like, I think it's a really important question. It keeps coming up. She was pressured around that question. She sent a memo around that question. But, like, what is the actual substantive law? How can we not get that answer from the city law department?
That is also something that Corporation Council has previously opined on. I would ask you to go back to his previous advice, but the opportunity to question around this, I believe, would have been during the confirmation hearing itself.
I guess I'm not, there's something I must be missing, like...
Councilmember Martin, is the question, maybe I'm not understanding the question.
I mean, should we have a private session now? Is that the, because, to me, this is a simple question that we need legal guidance on, apparently, because we have different opinions on what the role of council is relating to the Police Accountability Board, and the entity meant to answer legal questions around that is not able to provide an answer. Like, I can't make it up. There's a charter, there's substantive law, and there's a law has to interpret it, and I'm looking for an answer, because I see some contradictions and some potential conflicts between the expectations we're sharing right now of the PAB as it relates to council, and there's a difference between what's written, and I just need legal clarification on that difference. I mean, at the core of the issue around her appointment is the question around the relation to council and the role of council. And in writing that letter she wrote, I just want to understand legally, what is the role of council?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a law expert.
And we have a whole law department.
So, I can tell, I can tell you the discussions I've had with, and other colleagues can jump in and opine on this if they wish. I think the, we have to be separate in terms of the autonomy for the PAB to do its work around investigations and its day-to-day operational work. There should be no council interference when it comes to the ability to do the day-to-day operational work. I think that as a subunit of the city council, because regardless of the way things have gone the last couple of years, when you look at the structure of city government and where the Police Accountability Board was placed within the context of city government, it was placed under the council. So, it's a bureau of city council within the structure of city government. And with that being said, I think the things that are mentioned, frankly, around looking at, you know, the budget allocation every year and where do we want to go, you know, council can request the PAB to look into certain matters. It's not to say that we control everything that happens at the PAB, it's that we can direct. And so, that's my interpretation of it, but again, in terms of, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's what I was hoping to see.
Yeah, and I think what I'm seeing is, like, there is an inherent contradiction between, like, your interpretation, the interpretation which I feel that there's pressure to emulate, and what is written in the law. And we have our opinions, and that's why I thought it might be important to have a legal department weigh in on this question, because it is a big question, right? Around the question of strategic objectives, in our recent work session, there was a significant issue around the law department essentially setting the boundaries of how far the policy department could look into different cases. And we recognize, and we said at that time, like, those barriers shouldn't exist. We entrust a community-led board. We hire a staff, so there's no bias, there's no influence, but then now we're saying that we should have a certain amount of influence. It is a very significant contradiction right now, and I think it's important to answer as we bring in our next ED.
Councilmember Patterson? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Monroe, Councilmember Patterson, and then I got Councilmember Gruber.
Thank you, President Melendez. Dr. Myers-Mall, I apologize that I wasn't able to be here for your confirmation hearing. And at that time, I was told that if I had a question, I could ask one. So, I do have one question for you before I follow up with what's happening now. So, there have been problems with maintaining a neutral staff who demonstrates impartiality in civic matters. I was wondering if you were aware of this issue and how you would address it as a director? Sorry. If you're aware of the issue and how you would address it as director?
We have a wireless mic we're going to bring over, make it easier.
And I can state that again if you'd like.
Thank you.
Okay. So, there have been problems with maintaining a neutral staff who demonstrates impartiality in civic matters. I was wondering if you were aware of that issue and what you would be doing as a director to address it.
Thank you, Councilmember Monroe. Yes, I have been made aware of that, and I keep reiterating a few things. One, the importance of all the contents in the charter, and that it is important for us to be unbiased and to approach this from a neutral position. We have a series of trainings since I've been working that do address this in part. We've had outside individuals come in. I reiterate that. My deputy executive reiterates that. So, that's something that is a consistent message about the importance of just going in and looking at the facts and reporting that, and not coming from it with a predetermined outcome.
And then, I think then the issue extended to comportment outside of the day-to-day office, but other things that would make staff seem that they are not neutral and have predetermined ideas about their role.
Would you mind giving me an example? Because I'm not, you said comportment outside of work.
Yes. You know, I would have to follow up with you on that privately, so...
Okay.
I know I will want to talk with you at some point, but we could follow it up.
Okay, sure. I'm very open to that.
Thank you. And I appreciate your response and the trainings that you've conducted so far.
Thank you. I'll stay just a second.
All right, Councilmember Monroe, you have additional?
Yes, so, I just wanted to be able to ask that question. It's not another question for you. Thank you, Dr. Small. But actually, a large piece of this is really much in line with what Councilmember Martin has said. And so, you know, a few things, notwithstanding the memo that we received today at close to five PM, I was concerned from watching the hearing that there wasn't an understanding, really, of what council's role is as the head and PAB being a bureau. And I think a big piece of that is because this body hasn't made it clear. So, I'm new to council, but over the last seven months, there has only been one meeting about the PAB. So, despite the fact that Sherri Walker Coort was an interim director, that we knew a change was coming, and that we selected a consultant to headhunt for this position, we have not come to terms on what I think is a very critical issue, and that's the establishment of a useful, high-functioning bureau that can effectively conduct investigations, make changes, improve community-police relations, and stand solid in its impartiality. Too much has gone wrong with the PAB in the past, not to provide boundaries, expectations, and goals for the organization. There was discussion during the confirmation hearing on the eleventh about the fact that the court decision regarding the PAB's disciplinary powers was negative, that there are no disciplinary powers over the RPD. So, while, and this was indicated during the hearing, while it is the intention of city council to review the charter and remove the pieces about the disciplinary powers, that also gives us the opportunity to contemplate what this revised PAB should be. And for this reason, I do not think it makes sense to choose a director at this time. I think that we are putting the cart before the horse, and a rush to confirm any candidate could complicate further the relationship of the PAB and council, and further erode the public's confidence in the PAB.
And lastly, I do want to echo Councilmember Martin's point that in that one meeting we had, you know, it became obvious that there was also tension for the PAB with other aspects of city hall. And again, I think that this comes from a lack of clarity on what the PAB today, without disciplinary powers, is and should be. Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson, followed by Councilmember Gruber. All right, Councilmember Gruber.
Thank you. I would slightly disagree with Councilmember Monroe's take, and only respectfully, because I think that I've had a longer view of it, and I don't think that all of the misunderstanding is due to council's lack of clarity, although I do take the point that since the appellate court ruling, there certainly needs to be some really significant dialogue. I would say that at the root of so much of what's gone wrong with the Police Accountability Board, and I don't want to only paint a negative picture, but I think it's fair to say that the PAB today is not the PAB that we all expected several years ago, four years ago, when we changed, when we changed the charter and voted unanimously. And actually, in my seven years on council, the only time we ever overrode a veto from the mayor, there was a significant celebration, and it felt like we were all moving in one accord. And very quickly, the Police Accountability Board took an incredibly adversarial role. And that took a very adversarial role and position, I should say. And the adversary was, in many ways, everyone. The adversary was certainly city council. The adversary was certainly city hall. The adversary was certainly the police department of the Locust Club. All the very entities that we had written the charter to specifically try to create and facilitate collaboration, immediately, the Police Accountability Board took an adversarial stance. And I don't, without going into so much detail, I think it's fairly clear that that stemmed directly from the former executive director, who's no longer here. It stemmed directly from many members of the PAB who are no longer on the board. I believe there's only one member of the board left from that era. But I have to say that during the confirmation hearing, those, that feeling came back. It felt a little bit like deja vu, and I don't believe for a moment, Dr. Myers-Mall, that you intended for there to be an adversarial perspective. But I would say that referring to city council as, I believe the words were, "outside influence", is the, it brought up some very bad memories. It brought up very bad memories of a very dark era in creating a new agency that everyone felt great about, and the leadership just said immediately, "We're going to fight everyone, no matter who they are." And at the end of the day, this agency works if we understand ourselves as a team, in particular, the PAB and the city council. That is the only way that it works, that there, of course, we don't get involved with the actual investigation. Of course, we understand that the independence of the investigative responsibilities is paramount, and we're not going to tell anyone who to investigate or how to investigate. But the idea that we are outside influences is, to me, endemic of the larger problem that's been the case for the past four years. And again, just brought up some really, really bad memories. But at the end of the day, I appreciated the memo, although I have to acknowledge, the first memo didn't feel great either. It required a subsequent memo, and I think at this point, I am actually going to vote yes for one very significant reason. And that is that the Police Accountability Board today, at this moment, feels markedly different from how it felt in the past several years. I really appreciate the tone that it has taken. I appreciate our chair, the chair of the board, Larry Knox, and the work that the board has done. I appreciate the serious tenor of the staff, so many new staff members who have come in and see their job is to roll their sleeves and do work, and not just to fight with everyone, but to get the work of the PAB done. And every one of those people is standing behind you and in your corner. And so, at the end of the day, if that's where the Police Accountability Board is, if that's where the leadership of the staff is, if that's where our council president, who has to engage with the PAB more than any of us do, if that's where they all are, I will support it too. But I would just implore you to remember that we are in this together, that we are not an outside influence, that we are not against you in any way, we are not against the PAB succeeding in their mission. We are, in fact, the very entity that every year approves the PAB's budget, approves their KPIs, asks questions about how the work is going to get done, approves the board members, and makes sure that the thing is able to run. And so, see us as an ally and not an adversary, or there is no way that this is going to be successful for anyone. But I will vote yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruber. Any additional comments? Councilmember Martin?
So, yeah, just a quick review of the charter, since, you know, we can't get that support from law right now. There's nothing that says that the city council should have the amount of influence over the PAB that I think some of the council members here want. So, again, I do ask that we seek our own outside legal opinion on this, or really get clarity around what this says, because there are very significant contradictions around the, what's written and the expectations, and holding this institution to these expectations based on opinion and not what was voted in and supported by the community is a contradiction that I think is problematic and does cause a lot of issues. For me, my vote today is going to be a yes, and that is based on my trust in the board. That is based on... Mike, do you have something to say? Do you have something to say? Do you want to cut me off while I'm speaking? Do you have something to say?
Excuse me. Let's focus on...
Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to keep going, okay? I'm going to keep going. If you want to, if you want to interrupt, I can stop and let you talk, okay?
We don't, we don't need to get in.
Okay? If you want to interrupt, I can stop and let you talk.
Councilmember, councilmembers, let's remain focused, please.
It's easier to remain focused when you're not interrupted.
Exactly. You did, you did. I'm sitting here, and I heard you interrupt me, Mike. You did, you did, you did.
Councilmember, you still have the floor.
If he has something to say, I'm going to wait for him, and then I can get back to what I was saying.
You have the floor.
Great. So, my vote is going to be a yes, based on my trust in the board, based on what I saw you speak about, based on your commitment to ensuring that this institution does thrive and succeed. I am hopeful that you will continue to stabilize this organization. I do trust that you understand how important this institution is to many of us in this community. I trust that you'll lead in a unbiased and fair way. You do have my full support, and I want you to know my questions around independence, we're not directed towards you, or like, being taken, having an issue with you, but I think it points to, like my colleague was saying, a much larger issue within our body, within the law department, and not having clarity ourselves. So, we're hopeful, I'm excited to see what you do, and you have my full support.
Councilmember Patterson?
So, I will be, as I said, it's a confirmation hearing, and I'll say again, I am certainly going to be voting in support of your confirmation. I'll speak for myself. I have no interest in being in any way trying to influence anything that PAB does regarding any of its investigations. As a matter of fact, I work diligently to stay away from PAB. The only time I really get involved is when we're looking at budget, the budget issues. We will, I will be more involved as we're looking at the redesign with the charter changes, but, and again, I speak for myself. I don't believe that there are really many council members that are interested in imposing any of their will in any way, shape, or form on PAB. We created you specifically and particularly, and I would hope that council members, and I would hope that councilmembers Lightfoot and councilmember Gruber would speak to this a little bit more too, because they were integral in the design of the PAB. Council is committed to not trying to influence any of your deliberations... any of your deliberations, any of your, anything that you do. We pretty much just want you to do what we created you to do. That's it. Nothing else, nothing more. And so when we're, but at the same time, to councilmember Gruber's point, this notion that under a previous leadership, it was like, we're not answerable to anybody. We don't have to do anything that anybody says. We are our own independent entity in government, co-equal, and in some cases, greater than those that created us. Wrong. Just absolutely wrong. To councilmember Monroe's point, and I said it, I've said myself, you are a subordinate entity of city council. You are not accidentally a subordinate entity of city council. I believe councilmembers Gruber and councilmembers Lightfoot and President Scott were very intentional in moving PAB away from the administration. How far can we get them away and still have them be in government? Well, the only place it could be is council. And so we will take you under our wing and you will be a part of us. And we will actually give you some of our power. Gentlemen, am I making any of that up? So we've been for PAB before there was a PAB. We've sat here all these years, all this noise, all this foolishness, all this money. And still, we have persisted. And we've stood by you, even when there were days when we had people coming at us. Like, why y'all still doing that? And we ain't talking about the cops. We talking about the neighborhood. Why y'all still doing that? That don't make no sense. And so we are still committed, oh, correction. I'm still committed to having a PAB that works because you are needed. But I want to be real clear. I have no interest, look, I ain't been over there and I ain't trying to go over there. Y'all got a job, go do it. I'm not trying to direct you or any of that. And I don't think any other council member is. But we do want you to be effective. And we are counting on you to repair the relationship that the heavily damaged relationship that this entity has with this community. The underlying premise of creating the PAB was that the civilian review board had lost credibility with the community. There is no reason to believe that you have any greater credibility with the community right now than the civilian review board had when we got rid of them. That is the challenge before you. And it's my hope that you are up to the challenge. Thank you.
Councilmember Lightfoot, followed by councilmember Lupien.
Yes, I'll be very brief. A couple of things, I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Dr. Gruber. Him and myself and former President Larry Scott did spend countless hours, days, months, years working on the PAB legislation. And also to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Mr. Patterson, in regards to how we moved and why we moved the PAB the way we shifted and moved it. Because it was under the police department. Let's be very clear, it wasn't under necessarily administration. It was under the police department. And that was very problematic for what you were, your task and what the job of the PAB was to do. So to be very intentional about moving it into council, which to be quite honest with you, seemed to be the better place for it to be considering that we're all representative of the constituents that we're serving. But I want to first go back for a second and just get some clarification because I think there may be some misunderstanding and I want to make sure I'm very clear. I didn't hear law say, councilmember Martin, from what I heard, and I was listening very carefully, I didn't hear them say they could not share the information with us. What I thought I heard them say is that we would have to go into a confidential setting. And in that confidential setting, that information could be shared. Is that correct?
Yes, councilmember. But on top of that as well, I do need to point out that Corporation Council did provide this advice previously. And I would be remiss in not recommending that the advice come from him again to the extent that it is needed again.
Corporate, come from him? Him, who's?
Patrick Bee.
Okay, so this has been provided, you're saying we already have this information?
Yes, I believe he's opined on this issue previously.
Okay, all right. So we'll have to revisit that and make sure that all councilmembers have that information. Councilmember President, could you just make sure that that possibly happens? And then my last and final comment will be that I too, to the sentiments of my colleagues, will support you, Dr. Meyer Small. I believe that it's time for the Police Accountability to move along. And as I agree, and I've said this in the beginning of last year, because I kind of, it was kind of like watching something you created, you're like a child, that wayward child go off and join a gang or something like that, you know what I mean? And you're so disappointed, right? You tried to bring him back on the other side. But to see, and I'll be honest with you, it was tough love that for a while there, I truly was not very happy with Police Accountability Board because we spent so much time and energy and we knew what we were creating. However, I said this statement publicly, and I'll say it again. I have respected the changes that have been made from the board to the chair of the board, to the board members, to the interim director that I highly have a lot of respect for, to include all the way up until this point, to yourself. So I support the move along forward. And I am looking forward to seeing the work that's going to go forward in the future. But I too just say that we are a team and we're critical allies. And I hope that we will be seen as partners because we can do much more together than we can apart. And so I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes, Dr. Meyer Small, you have the support of the board. You have my full support. And I've heard some of my colleagues say, you have a job to do, go do it. It's not that simple. You need us to do our jobs too, to make sure that you have what you need so that the PAB can do their job. And you have my support in that as well. And I just want to commit you, commend you for your courage to step up to this challenge.
Vice President Harris, followed by councilmember Monroe.
Dr. Meyer Small, thank you so much for your efforts and what you put forward in the memo. We appreciate that you were able to resubmit that memo. It helped me with the clarity that I needed. I would say that I did have challenges, just like my colleagues Stanley, councilmember McMartin, and councilmember Monroe, about the legalese of where we stand. But I'm certain that we can get that clarified and cleared up. It will not impede my vote for you as a yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
Council President, I would like to make a motion to return this to the table and with the intention of us all being on the same page before we move forward to installing a permanent director.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion fails?
I will second it.
It's been seconded? So we will vote on returning the item to committee? We'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber?
No.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
No.
Councilmember Lupien?
No.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
No.
Councilmember Smith is excused. Vice President Harris?
No.
President Melendez?
No. The motion fails. So now I'll move us to consideration of introductory number 300. And we will do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
No.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith is excused. Vice President Harris?
Yes.
And President Melendez?
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Meyer Small. So in closing here, I just want to add a final word related to your appointment. I just want to say to you, Dr. Meyer Small, that we really do look forward with great anticipation the next steps here. And we know that there's a lot of work ahead. We have high hopes for your stewardship of the Police Accountability Board. And we all wish you much success in your next endeavors. With no further business to come before the council, we are adjourned.